Okay, we're now going on to item number two, our tree program. So, before we start, I just want to say that Michael was the winner, Michael and a team that he put together, was the winner of our innovation challenge that we had. We put out a challenge to all the employees to come up with innovative ideas and proposals, and we had 22 proposals from all different departments in the city. And Michael's proposal for a tree farm that would be available to the community was the winner.
Well, yes, we're very-
He's our tree guy.
We are very proud of our trees. Good morning, everyone. So, Michael and I are here to talk about our tree program. I hope everybody had a good weekend. Last night, I was finally able to see Bohemian Rhapsody. Have you guys seen it?
Yes.
It's so good. So, I woke up this morning with Queen music looping around in my head, and I'm thinking specifically, "We are the champions." So, we are the tree champions here, and-
The team.
You've got to hang with me now. I'm trying to talk as fast as I can, you know. So, not only Michael and I, but also Ray Carenci, Todd Schneider, Greg Mahalco, and Andrew Burnett. We pull in maybe engineers or irrigation people whenever that's needed. And we've also been working with landscape architect Wayne Villavasa, and also an ex-state forester consultant Charlie Marcus. So, it's really been a collaborative effort to move this project. We're going to talk about a few things today, our mission, the progress we've made, the tree canopy assessment and tree inventory. Michael's gonna talk about that and the urban tree management plan, and then where we're getting our funding from for the tree programs that we've done, and then what we're doing to look forward. Our mission is pretty straightforward. We want to expand the tree canopy we have, we want to protect it, and we want to be good stewards, conservationists, and provide education to our community. So, there are a lot of benefits with trees, and one of the words that you may hear from us is ecosystem services. That doesn't just roll off your tongue like you're used to hearing that. But what that really means is all the value in your trees. So, it may be carbon sequestration, of course, storm water retention, the great shade and cooling. You know, if you plant a tree on the south and west side of your building, you're going to have cooler time in the summer, so your air conditioning's a little better, so you even get a little energy reduction, and it increases your property value. They can, of course, add beauty, habitat, and it goes right along with some of our other core initiatives, like our mobility plan, to get people out walking and biking and out of their cars. So, what have we been doing this past year or two? It may not see like a lot of visible signs because we have not planted a lot of big trees yet, but just like anything, devil's in the details. So, our team has been working on updating the landscape code that will protect our trees better, and we're expanding what's required for trees in the landscape. We have internal policies now for our city operations through the STAR Communities Program, IPM, Integrated Pest Management, so that we're not wanting to put chemicals in our areas, or at least to the least possible. And we also have landscape guidelines that say we're going to get rid of our invasive exotic plants, and we're going to focus on natives. So, we're really trying to put all of that together and support our trees. We've been doing a tree canopy assessment that's taken two years to do. We were waiting on LiDAR from the county. We got it, it's done, it's great, you're going to love it. Michael'll tell you more about it. We're also have initiated a tree inventory that is going to be a great resource for everyone, not just within trees, but for residents as well. Our downtown tree and assessment and irrigation study, this is the reason that we have not gone ahead and planted trees in the downtown right now. We don't want to put money, good money after bad, so to speak. We know that there are irrigation problems, the trees that are missing died for a reason. We've also been looking at who really is responsible for the tree. In some cases, it's our developers. There's a maintenance agreement that we're trying to get people to recognize and make good on. So, we've been doing a very in-depth assessment, and we will be coming back to you all when we find out what's happening with the irrigation system to see how we might move forward in improving that. But we are about to go out to bid for six large trees for the downtown. We've also partnered with FPL to put some large trees in at Howard Park to go along with our solar tree program. So, we used some of our million-dollar tree fund to put six 20-foot trees in the Howard Park, and then FPL funded for more. Part of the sustainability office's effort has been to give trees to residents. Now, these are three-gallon trees, they're natives, and we have given away over 4,000 of them in the last four years. It's really a well-received program. We also, for the first time, really have a tree, urban tree management plan, which you'll hear a little bit more about, that we got a small grant to help us fund that. I talked about the maintenance agreement for trees, but we're also going to be using that, not just in the downtown, but as we move out and put trees in the community, some of the bigger projects that we have that might call for trees in the parkways, we're going to be asking our residents or the property owner to be able to take care of those trees, which is what is supposed to be happening now, but that sometimes happens and sometimes doesn't. And then we've also added a different kind of planting program as far as how we actually are going to plant our trees in the downtown. It's called a suspended paver system, and I'm sorry, we should have set up the framework for it, but it's basically a structure that allows sidewalk or pavers on the top, structure so that on the inside is good soil, healthy, alive soil for the trees to be able to prosper. Most urban trees only have a life expectancy of seven to eight years. So, if you think about it, there's this compacted soil or sand, given what we have here. You plop a tree in it, so it's sort of like a bowl, it grows a little bit, and just when you think it's going to start looking great, it starts to die back because there's no place for the roots to go. And that's why we're looking at this suspended paver system.
And that's what we used on the 300 block, so you might have seen it as you were walking down there.
Absolutely, and we're going to be using it on the 200 and 100 block as well. So, Michael's going to talk to you about a few things now.
Good morning. So, yes, over the last couple of years, we've really worked hard to lay a foundation, lay a basis for our tree program. In order for us to manage what we have, we need to know what we have, we need to be able to measure what we've got. So, we first initiated a tree canopy assessment. This assessment used GIS, used a lot of different data layers, and helped us identify exactly where our tree canopy is within the city of West Palm Beach. It gave us an average tree canopy coverage of about 30%, and this includes everything downtown, all parts of the city outside of Grasewares Preserve. So, in general, you know, we say we've got about 30% coverage, and this gives us a target to build off of and something to build upon so we could increase our canopy. In doing this analysis, we were able to identify other, I guess, coverages within the city. We identified impervious surface, water, vegetation, a lot of other different things. And so, we came up with a map that's got classification for every pixel on the map. Everything is classified as something, and this allows us to be able to just identify really what we've got going on here in the city. To complement the tree canopy, we wanted to build a couple of other maps with different data sets, just to kind of run some relationships, run some correlations, and see if this canopy correlates with any other types of trends that we've got going on in the city. And we're still working on a lot of this analysis, but we built maps that showed temperature, stormwater inundation, community health, different attributes and characteristics of our community, what's going on with our population. And this is going to allow us to be able to target tree canopy in the city, be able to use other data types, and be able to focus, "We need trees over here because it's hot," or "We've got a stormwater issue going on over here, maybe trees could help this out a little bit." All the data that we have is publicly accessible and accessible here within the city. You know, we're really willing to share everything that we've got. We update it regularly. Sometimes the vendors that we work with are going to update it every couple of years, sometimes it's five years, really just depends on where we're getting the data from and kind of their schedule. And again, all this data is going to be used to help target and prioritize where the canopy, where the canopy needs are within our community, where we want to increase, and where we can increase within the city. To complement the tree canopy analysis, we are conducting a tree inventory. So, you can envision the canopy analysis as a very top layer, very broad map of where the trees are, but you don't know exactly what those players are making up that canopy. So, that's what the tree inventory is for. This is a lower-level analysis on city-owned properties, so parks, parkways, right-of-ways, anything the city owns, and we're going through and identifying attributes of each individual tree, which is going to take a very long time to do, of everything that's going on with each of these individual trees. Again, this data is GIS-compatible, so it's going to relate, it's going to connect with all the other data that we've got, and we're making it publicly accessible and updating it systematically. We're going through each individual park, we're going down streets, and we're going to set a nice schedule to get all the trees in the city inventoried. In carrying out this inventory, so if you can imagine, it's basically take a laptop out, and it's got a map on it, you drop a point on the map, it brings up a spreadsheet, and you can identify all types of other attributes of this tree. You do the botanical name, the common name, you can do the height, trunk diameter, canopy width, the condition, maintenance responsibility, I mean, you name it, we can put it on here. You can stand there and update this spreadsheet right then and there. This inventory is going to be really, really helpful because it's going to help us back up what we've got in the city when it comes to storm response, and especially FEMA funding for replacing the trees that we've got. It's going to lay out a diversity matrix, so we're going to be able to tell you how diverse our community is. We don't want monoculture. We want something that's very diverse, we want a lot of different trees. This is going to give us an opportunity to identify how many different species we really have. It's going to lay a foundation for maintenance and replacement. Again, it's going to allow us to be able to identify where the trees are, what we have there, and if we need to come in and replace it, we know what to replace with, as well as keep track of the health of each individual tree from time to time. And again, it's a very great opportunity for education. This is something that's really cool to pull up, you know, on your computer right then and there when you're talking to somebody. You can pull it up on your phone, actually, and kind of show them what's going on. You can pick each of these individual points and really talk about all the different attributes of one individual tree.
Michael, is that available now?
It is. It's an open-source website we've got going on right now through-
And to what extent is it complete, do you think? A little bit.
A little bit, yeah. We've got 5,000 trees in right now, it took a real long time to do, and we've covered three parks in the downtown, so we've got a lot more work to do.
Commissioner James, do you have a question?
Thank you, and it really relates to how frequently we update the information. And information is great, and by the way, this seems, sounds like a very good program. Now, I think I heard you say that for the tree canopy assessment, that's updated only every two to five years by the vendors and-
Yes, because the data that we use for it is, we depend upon a lot of different vendors, I guess, to pull it all together to update the data. So, sometimes they run on a two-year schedule, sometimes it's a five-year schedule.
Okay. Now, if we change vendors, does that information go away? And what about the responsibility for updating if we happen to change vendors during that period of time?
So, what Michael is talking about is, for example, we have health information that we get from the state health department. So, we pull that in when they have updated information, or there may be, for an example, with just the canopy coverage itself, the trees don't grow that fast, you know, to see a huge change. So, either we want to wait that five years so that we can see the plantings that we've done and the progress, or, say, heaven forbid, we have a storm and it takes out a lot of trees, well, then certainly right after that, we would want to do another assessment. I mean, if you think about what Michael has done up in the Panhandle, I think Todd was sharing-
Not this Michael.
Not this Michael.
Hurricane Michael.
Hurricane Michael. I think Todd was sharing with us that 70% of the tree canopy is gone. So, if there was a case like that, we'd go right back in as we needed to. So, it's really not, it's not a vendor that we contract with, it's another place that we get data from.
And so, we've laid this foundation, but we need a way to communicate this to the community and communicate this within the city. So, this past year, we've worked on an urban tree management plan, and this was funded through a grant through the Florida Forest Service. And this basically gave us an opportunity to collaborate, work together, and get the different departments together to come up with some best management practices and outline the standards for how we want to care for the trees and the community. This gives us a way to champion our healthy and sustainable urban forest. Our plan that we have together highlights the value of the trees, it outlines the current tree program that we're following, but it also makes recommendations for the future for how we can increase our tree canopy, and some adjustments we need to make within the city to have a more healthy urban forest. And because it's a hard-written document, we can take it out in the field with us, it's great for the Parks and Rec guys to actually show residents who have questions what, you know, our standards are and how we're going about handling each of the tree issues that we identify.
Did you guys wear green on purpose today?
Would we do that?
Commissioner Lambert?
Before you switch back, I just had a question about the capturing of the data. So, you mentioned that you've done three parks so far, is that right? Two or three? How long will it take to do all of the rest of our parks? And are we going, I'm sure we're going about it in some kind of efficient or systematic way.
Right. Well, I guess it depends on how many feet you have on the ground. Last summer, we were working with some interns, and you know, we've been updating it among ourselves, but it takes a lot of people or a whole lot of time to do this, so.
We had interns out and about last summer. You know, they would come dragging in because it was 95 degrees, and they were counting trees, but they did a really great job. So, we'll have interns again this summer as well.
We're hoping to not just have them during the summer now, but Michael and I are going to talk to Palm Beach State College to try and get some of their horticulture students because you can't just have anybody do it. You've got to have someone who has at least nominal, you know, knowledge of the trees.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Just to follow up on the count, I remember when I first got on the commission four years ago, we were talking about needing to do this count and that all of the barriers to achieve that because you have to get a baseline of information. So, is this the baseline where we are now to help build on that? And then, when you talked about the engagement and with the other departments, one of the things that, you know, Penny, we've been in the community many, many times where people want to be a part of this, they want to help us as much as possible. We have lots of landscape architects, we have lots of horticulturists, and in my neighborhood particularly, Elsie, they have been, for two years, been trying to participate. So, in this engagement with the rest of the city, are we able to incorporate now our communities and the outside resources that really want to help us with this?
I think we would take on anybody that wants to help us, that, you know, that we can recognize as being somewhat qualified with that, for sure.
And that's the question, because they're wanting to find that point of entry in which they can be determined as qualified. I know you finally sort of certified the Elsie neighborhood guys as being sufficient to plug into this, but he's not sure where to plug in yet, so.
Well, we really are, the reason we're coming to you today is that all of this work has sort of come to fruition right now, and we are looking to really move forward, especially with the, you know, with the inventory. So, now is a great time, and we will be reaching out. This program, you know, you have your iPad, Surface Pro, whatever we're using, and you literally take a picture of the tree at the same time, and it's uploaded into the software as well. So, even if there was some question about, hmm, do I really know what tree variety that is, we could, between all of us, we could figure it out. So, we'll be reaching out.
Yeah, maybe we could do a call for volunteers and do a little training for the people who might want to be a part of this and send them out into the neighborhoods.
Be happy to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Question, ma'am.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. More a comment. You kind of glossed over it, but I think it was a great idea. You said we got a grant from the Florida Forest Service. How much was that? Whose idea was it? That's, it seems like some very innovative thinking.
We're always looking for money and help, just so you know. It was a $20,000 grant, and we added to it between our budget and the parks' budget to sort of expand it a little bit. We are still looking for those grants. They're not usually large, and for example, the reason we're going this route with the tree canopy, oh, excuse me, the tree inventory, is the estimate that we got on contracting it, $240,000. So, typically, what happens in cities, they do parts of a city, so you know, maybe you'll get a fifth of a city done every year, and then it just continues to roll. We're hoping to do a lot better than that and focus on, you know, our community engagement and our interns.
Great job.
Well, we've got a couple more things, and I'll try and move through them quickly. Our million-dollar tree fund, I wish we had come up with a better name for it than that, we haven't done that yet, but it sure says a lot when you say a million dollars. So, totally thank you to the mayor for setting that aside. And what we're doing with that, we are targeting the northwest and the downtown. So, that is where we've been getting our assessments and how we're going to be planting some trees. Some of that funding was also used for the 300 block of Clematis, we used it for the Howard Park trees, also the assessment that's happening in the downtown right now. And we are, we have a plan that we're going to be working with the northwest to find out what kind of trees they like, who wants to take care of the tree, and then signing that agreement with that. The 10,000 Trees in 10 Years is a program through our budget that I've really already talked about, but it's about engagement, awareness, and education. And then, the Tree Canopy Mitigation Fund that actually Ray sort of oversees is from typically developers, although I guess if it was a big residential program or something, that could be part of it too. But it is for developers that cannot, that have to remove trees and cannot put the correct amount of trees back on their land. They pay into a mitigation fund, and then those funds are used on our public property to plant trees, and those requests do come to the commission for approval. Okay, looking forward, there's always an ask, right? So, we're going to be coming back and asking you for some things. But obviously, we want to maximize our tree canopy coverage. If you saw the canopy assessment when Michael was talking, the lighter-colored blocks were the fewer trees. So, we want to target in on those areas that need trees. We want to complete our inventory, we'll do our updates. The urban tree management plan, a plan is great, but you have to have dollars for it. So, I just want to go back to say that, you know, we need to care for the trees that we have now. We also want to reestablish the tree replacement fund. There was one, and it sort of disappeared, I don't know, like 10 years ago or something, not quite that long ago. So, we want to have a fund specifically for replacing trees. And one of the things that will help a lot with our maintenance of our parks and our existing trees and parkways is to clarify who really is supposed to do it.
Yeah, and I think that the whole question of the trees and the swales, that needs to be clarified too, because people don't understand at this point that they're responsible for those trees, and sometimes they are and sometimes they aren't. We just need a consistent practice.
Absolutely, because what happens, and I don't want to speak too much for Todd, but what I understand is that his folks are so busy working on trees in parkways that they then don't have the time to put into the parks. So, if we could clarify that, because sometimes we take care of them and sometimes we don't. So, whether there was a contractor that took care of them, whether there was another crew, but it's really a big deal in getting our canopy really protected and thriving. Then, we're also looking at creating an urban forester and a landscape inspector. You know, we have all of this tree programs going on and all this interest, yet for a city of our size, we should have someone that's specifically is focused on that. This team has been working on it in addition to everything else that they're doing. So, you'll be hearing about that hopefully later. We're going to expand our education programs, we're going to really try and get updated on all of our landscape maintenance agreements. So, in that tree inventory, we're going to be able to click on a tree, and you'll be able to see who's taking care of it. Is it the city, or is it one of the buildings downtown? We want to continue to strengthen our tree protection codes, and then, of course, enhance code enforcement to make sure that everybody knows we're serious about taking care of trees. So, back to my first comment about Queen, you know, we want everyone to be a champion, and we need your help, so thank you very much.
Thank you, well done, and we appreciate you guys for all the work that you're doing. So, thank you, all you tree champions over there. Just don't make us break out into song.
Yeah, you don't want me singing either.
Commissioner Ryan, do you have a question?
I do, and you brought it up when you first introduced this and said that they had won the award for innovation about the tree farm, and I was really excited to see if it was in your presentation, but it wasn't, because, you know, we're going through all of this work in the neighborhoods and, you know, upgrading the infrastructure part of the bond work, and it's a real battle with the community, which trees are coming back, which trees are going to get replaced, because, you know, and I'm sure that Mr. Kelly knows a lot about the impacts of the neighborhood on those trees. So, are we close to having a place to maybe, when we take them out in that infrastructure repair, to put them and begin that tree farm?
Yeah, it's two different things that we're talking about. Michael, just quickly tell us about, quickly.
Sure. Okay, so, the innovation challenge idea that we had was actually, we called it a food forest. It's a bunch of fruit trees, it's a fruit grove.
Tell me the name of it.
So, we're going in a food forest, but our group name was Two to Mango and Trees a Party. And so, the idea is to plant some fruit trees. And so, the idea is to, is to plant some fruit trees.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Two to Mango Trees Party. Um, so the, the idea was to plant some fruit trees within, uh, one of the neighborhoods and, and, uh, get a lot of neighborhood input on what types of trees they would like to see there, what type of fruit they would like in their community and, um, and make it available for the community residents.
So they would, they would be able to go and get the fruit off the tree and it would be part of their?
Right, right, and the site we identified was on Henrietta Avenue next to, um, Henrietta Bridge Farms. So, um, they're working on, on cleaning that site up now and, um, we'll put in some irrigation, start planting trees, hopefully by the end of the summer.
Good, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Newery?
Yeah, just a quick comment, and, and that's really to the entire team. I think when we talk about, uh, becoming a phenomenal city of the future, so to speak, that this is integral, this is, this is so important and oftentimes, um, the more polarizing issues are the ones that are highlighted. But this kind of work are the things that, no pun intended, but we're literally planting trees that we don't intend to sit under and witness its greatness, so to speak. So, uh, thank you to the team for all your work on this.
Thank you, I mean, you're right, this, Penny and her team do amazing things every day and, um, it's, you know, it's not stuff people even know about or talk about. And, um, you know, kudos to you all. Right?
I forgot something.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, sorry, Ray Coranci, landscape planner. Um, to answer Commissioner Ryan's, um, question a little bit better, is we've been working with parks with one of the residents in El Cid who's very enthusiastic about planting, um, and reforesteding there. So we're, we're doing a cooperative, like a pilot program right now where the city's going to pay 50% of the cost of the trees and the residents are going to pay 50% of the cost. And we'll move forward with that. And it's one of the first, um, programs that we're going to do, but we'd like to do this in each neighborhood as we go, um, to see where trees are needed and get the community involved to, to plant them and take care of them.
Super, thanks. Commissioner James?
Back to that program, so paying for 50% of the cost of acquisition? Or 50% of the, I mean, and then how are the maintenance responsibilities discussed and assigned?
Right, so, so that's just about the initial cost is for planting and getting the, getting the trees in. Then, um, we've developed over the last year and a half an agreement with, with the, the city attorney that the residents will sign, kind of making a commitment to take care of that tree, that they're going to take responsibility for it. And I think that's the biggest step is, you know, having the, the community and the neighborhood invest in, in supporting us and, in doing this, so. Okay?
All right, thank you guys, good job.